So we're going to call the roll.
Call the meeting to order.
Okay, this meeting of the State Board of Education is hereby called to order online. Al.
And then the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
Justice, justice for all.
Okay. And Al, I have been, as you can all tell, having problems coordinating computers this morning, so could you?
Well, next is the attendance roll call.
Well, yeah, I suppose so. Roll roll call and then the public participation.
Okay, so Chair Taylor, you're here.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Lopez.
Here.
Erin Benham.
Here.
Bonnie Burr.
Here.
Okay, and once again, Eric Clemens will be is not has not joined us yet, correct? Eric Clemens?
You don't see him.
Karen DeBose Walton?
Yes, I'm here.
Al Wood Exley?
Here.
Donald Harris?
Here.
Vice Chair, oh, I did that, excuse me. Martha Prue?
Here.
Thank you. Will DeRasco?
Here.
Okay, Malia Seavey, are you here? There's Malia, thank you. Thank you, that concludes, I'm sorry. Robert Chafai?
Alda.
Robert Chafai?
Here.
Thank you. And is Dr. Jane Gates here? Yes?
I'm getting a text that that Eric is on, he's having some challenge getting in.
Oh, but he's in route?
He can't get into the call, he's saying.
Oh.
I believe he's dialed in, though. He can hear and see us, he's telling me.
He can hear and see.
Behind the scenes, maybe someone could help him get on.
He should be on momentarily. Joined us on attending, but he should be on momentarily, thank you.
Okay, and is Dr. Jane Gates here? That concludes the attendance roll call. We have we have a quorum for the meeting and for voting.
Thank you. And Al, I saw, I think, so fine by me something says we have a number of public participants house.
Oh, my, I apologize. We have a total. We have a total of four public participants. One has submitted a written statement.
That's the AACT?
Right.
Okay.
So I believe the first person should be from CERC, Ms. Ingrid Kennedy.
Thank you.
Ingrid, please unmute yourself and you could speak.
Yes. Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning, Chairperson Taylor, Vice Chairperson Lopez, Commissioner Cardona, and distinguished board members. My name is Ingrid Kennedy, Executive Director of CERC. It was just last month that I came before you as we celebrated your historic approval of the African American, Black Puerto Rico, Puerto Rican Latino courses studies. They have made national news. Thank you to all of you, Commissioner Cardona. Thank you for your leadership and congratulations to you as our future Secretary of Education. Muchas felicidades. Today, I would like to express my gratitude on behalf of CERC, of the CERC staff, and the students and families that we serve for your recognition and honoring George Coleman for his years of distinguished service in education. George's long history and commitment to education are well known in our state and beyond. CERC has had the pleasure of having George as a longstanding advocate and as our board chair for many years. We cannot thank you enough for your appointment of George to our Board of Directors. His commitment, advocacy, and unwavering courageous leadership kept our agency standing during some of us more most challenging years. As you celebrate him today, we join you and thank you for recognizing a pioneer and visionary visionary educational leader. George, congratulations to you and please know that I will always cry on cue for you. Thank you so much. Congratulations, George. Thank you for this opportunity to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person will be Sarah Egan JD from the Office of the Child Advocate.
Sarah, please go ahead.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Egan and I run the State's Office of the Child Advocate. I'm unfamiliar with this platform. I see all of you. Can you only hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm audio only. Okay, great. First, I wanted to offer my heartfelt, deeply felt congratulations and enthusiasm for our Commissioner Miguel Cardona being selected to run the U.S. Department of Education. I could not be more excited about that, in no small part because of Commissioner Cardona's obvious and deeply felt advocacy on behalf of vulnerable populations. That is part of what I'm here to talk about. The Office of the Child Advocate, in partnership with my colleague, will be speaking next, Martha Stone, for the Center for Children's Advocacy. Remains deeply concerned about the impact of school closures on our most high need students, in particular, students with significant disabilities who lack the ability to access education remotely. As we all know, and as I know the State Department of Education and the State Board appreciates, these students in Connecticut have a constitutional right to an education and a civil right under federal law to an education. In districts in particular that have been remote for for months at a time, we know that there are children with very significant disabilities, be it autism, intellectual disability, multiple disabilities, who are not able to, because of age and combination of disability, access their education remotely. It is imperative that we fully understand, through an appropriate methodology and auditing where necessary, the full impact of those school closures on our highest need students. I give tremendous credit to the State Department of Education for standing up critical data on school attendance, maybe better and faster than most states have done, but we need to continue to drill down to understand that full impact for these students so that we can take the next steps to ensure access and the legal rights of all children, particularly our highest need, to an education, and urgently roll out an educational recovery framework for these students. Our ask would be that the State Board of Education keep this issue of understanding impact, ensuring access, and promoting recovery on as a standing agenda item every month at the State Board that would look at the access and recovery, also through an equity lens, describe what steps the state is taking to audit and ensure access, and importantly, to support educators for vulnerable students, who we know in many districts are doing the hard work of providing direct instruction to vulnerable students who depend on that instruction for their care and their learning. Those educators need support as well. Thanks very much for the time today. Appreciate everyone's hard work.
Thank you. Al.
The next person is Martha Stone from Center for Children's Advocacy.
Good. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Martha.
Okay, I want to echo my congratulations, obviously, to the Commissioner for your appointment. And George, you and I go back a long way, so I congratulate you also. I'm the Director of the Center for Children's Advocacy. It's a nonprofit law office for at-risk children. We have attorneys all over the state embedded in hospitals, high schools, and a mobile legal clinic to reach homeless youth. I'd just like to make three additional points to what Sarah made. The first one is we appreciate that the State Department of Ed has put out guidance, but we are seeing districts flaunt the guidance. We are seeing districts say, oh, it's just guidance and we don't need to follow it. This is particularly true in the special ed category with the highest, most vulnerable children. We would suggest a different kind of legal construct, which is that if children have an equal educational right to education in Connecticut, it can only be taken away if there's a less restrictive alternative. And we would suggest that both testing in schools and contact tracing can be those less restrictive alternatives, and the State Department of Ed should require some of the plans that would show what the least restrictive alternatives could be before you take away that state constitutional right. The second point, the inequalities that we're seeing district to district. West Hartford, full-time student access. Bridgeport, right now, has nineteen special education vacancies. Is there any suburban district that would have nineteen special ed vacancies? And there are ways, again, to mitigate this, which we would suggest. The third point I want to make is the student engagement. You have the data on student engagement, but we have not seen guidance on what plans to reach student engagement. And we conduct racial equity meetings in the in six districts, Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, Waterbury, Norwalk, and Hamden. And every student engagement plan is totally different. Bridgeport's student engagement plan is sending out police officers to find the kids versus New Haven, which has engaged the entire community for student engagement. So in closing, I would like to suggest two things. The first is that you do put this as a standing agenda item, not only at the State Board of Ed, but at your Accountability and Support Subcommittee. I think it's too important to have intermittent meetings and discussions about this, given the inequalities that we're seeing. And secondly, we would ask that you look at the Massachusetts Guidance on Audits that are being conducted by Massachusetts and consider the same. So thank you for listening and we appreciate all of what you're doing.
Thank you.
Chair Taylor, this is Charlene. May I respond?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. And so Attorney Stone and Egan, thank you very much for sharing this information with us. Certainly, our interests are aligned, as you noted, the systems that have been set up. And for the rest of the board to know that I've certainly had conversations with Chair Taylor and Vice Chair Lopez. And there's already a meeting scheduled with some of her senior staff to meet with both Attorney Stone and Egan, and also to make sure that they can come to the Accountability and Support Committee meeting to further, you know, kind of dive into the recommendations and the information shared here, and also allow us to share some of the things that we're doing specifically around engagement. So I just really wanted to share that information with the board and to thank them again for their commitment to our students and for looking forward to that work going forward.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Is there anything further on public?
The last person that we have is Dr. Catherine O'Callahan for AACT, AACTE, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Board meeting. O'Callahan, and I am the current Secretary of the Connecticut Chapter of the American Association of Colleges for Teacher Education. I am also the Chair of the Education and Educational Psychology Department of Western Connecticut State University in Banbury. And first of all, I would like to offer, on behalf of the Association, our warmest congratulations to Commissioner Cardona on his well-deserved nomination to be the next Secretary of Education. And we're excited at this opportunity to work with you in the years ahead, transform American education. AACTE Connecticut is an association of fourteen public and private colleges and universities that provide educator preparation programs to students interested in education profession. We promote and support high-quality teaching and education in the state schools and are advocates for robust educational leadership. On behalf of AACT Connecticut, I want to thank the Board of Education, Commissioner Cardona, and the Department of Education, especially those individuals with whom we work with frequently. Since COVID-19 pandemic initially struck Connecticut, we've all been hard at work, each of our institutions of higher ed, to try to determine the best paths forward for our teacher preparation programs and related functions. Our approach continues to be not only to with COVID-19 and its negative impacts, but also how to positively transform our programs for our students, our student teachers, teachers, professionals, and educational leaders moving forward. I want to point out that many of the same people who are part of AACT Connecticut are also on the task force of the Connecticut Higher Education Resilience Working Group on K-12 that is supported by the State of Connecticut, the Federal Emergency Management Agency Region One, and the Global Resilience Institute at Northeastern University. We are committed to helping transform our programs for the future nation recognition of the many changes generated by this pandemic. I also want to echo my previous AACT Connecticut colleague statements to the State Board of Ed. And we want to continue working together with all of you in the Department of Education, the Board, and the various educational stakeholders, such as the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and other education organizations. Please continue to feel free to reach out to our association on issues of mutual interest. Thank you again for this opportunity to address the board.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair Taylor, you'll now need a motion to go into executive session.
I have such a motion.
Move to go to executive session.
Second, by Erin.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that requires a roll call vote under the statute, doesn't it?
No, you don't need a roll call vote.
Is there any any objection? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I believe all the board members, you have your links to to access the executive session. So I believe you need to completely log out of this meeting and use your link for executive session.
Give it a try.
Second.
Okay, are there any objections? All those in favor, then raise your hand just for the record. Okay. So we're out of executive session. And then the next item in the agenda is the consideration of the minutes of the December second State Board of Education meeting.
I'll move. I'll move the minutes. This is Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Bonnie, I'll second.
Thank you. Any objections, changes? All those in favor, then raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Okay. Thank you.
And then the next item on the agenda is the report of the Commissioner.
Thank you. Is it morning still? Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you all. Really nice to see you all and nice to see you, George, as well. And Eric, it's really nice to see you. Nice to see you. I just wanted to take a very quick moment for us to acknowledge the public speakers today. While we don't typically do that, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank them for their well wishes and more importantly, for their continued partnership. We have had conversations, and you'll be hearing a little bit more later in the meeting around some of the work that's being done in Connecticut to while supporting local boards of education, making sure we're providing the support that's needed to provide in-person learning opportunities, safe in-person learning opportunities for students in Connecticut. I'm proud of the work that our team has done, and you'll hear more about it a little bit later. You'll also hear, and so Charlene will be leading that more the update later on in the meeting. And then you'll also hear from Desi some of the updates on the districts and kind of where we are, so you get a sense like we've done the last several months, where we are. He'll also give a little bit of information on the FAFSA challenge, which you'll be happy to hear. So just wanted to let you know that later in the agenda, we're going to have that. You know, in terms of the Commissioner's report, I just want to I don't have slides today. I just wanted to tell you that I'm appreciative of all the positive energy and support you've provided me personally, especially over the last month, but as I've served as Commissioner, I'm proud to serve as Commissioner of Education in Connecticut. The success we've had in our state is due in large part to the wonderful Board, the cohesive Board that I was fortunate to work with, talking to. And any consideration for me for nominee by the President-elect, Vice President-elect, is because of the success that this Board has had and the wonderful team at the State Department of Education. I know that the work that has been happening at the agency is a big part of the reason why I was even being considered. So thank you for what you're doing. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the the wonderful team at the State Department of Education, dedicated professionals who, you know, when the pandemic hit, we didn't know what to expect. How is this going to work, working remotely? You know, we were discussing teleworking prior to the pandemic and and scratching our heads, saying, is this going to work, this teleworking thing? You know, I mean, you know, people could sign up for one day or two days a week, and we were like, you know, is the productivity going to change? And then the pandemic hit. And the dedicated professionals at the agency rose to the occasion and did amazing work. And I want to take my moment here to acknowledge everyone at the agency for what they've done, especially during the pandemic. I've just been in awe. And the leadership team, I consider them friends. I consider them people that, you know, we went through a crisis together. We shared trauma together in terms of seeing what's happening, you know, our families and our loved ones. We experienced that together and together. You know, every week, multiple times, we came together and we put what's best for Connecticut kids at the forefront of our conversations. We care for one another. We looked out for one another. We made sure that we were okay because we were all dealing with what's happening with this pandemic. But at the end of the day, we came together for children of Connecticut. And I am so proud to have been a part of this team at the State Department of Education. To the board, you know, your support, your smiles, your texts have been instrumental for us to be able to do what we're doing. Your support when we face challenges or hefty criticism, your support kept us feeling confident that what we're doing is right for kids. And, you know, I want I want to reiterate that that was very important, and you did it at the right times. You did it at the right times. You know, this is a family, and I really feel strongly that you really helped lift us up as an agency. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work. We're in the middle of a health pandemic. And, you know, yes, I'm thankful that the vaccine is coming. Yes, I'm thankful that we were able to provide in-person learning options for students with mitigation strategies that are working. But we're not out of the woods by any stretch. And we need to stay as vigilant as ever and as committed as ever to work with our partners in the field, to listen, and to make sure that what we're doing is not only providing in-person learning options, but also doing so in a manner that promotes health and safety first. So I'm confident that our team has that mindset and that our path moving forward will continue to have health and safety as a priority. I'm going to pause there and just say thank you. You know, I'm a nominee for the Secretary of Education position, and I will be in a process of going through a Senate confirmation, so I'm not secretary until that process ends. And that's a very serious process. So I will say that your well wishes and your support have been, you know, greatly appreciated and that I'm committed to serving as Commissioner of Education until that process unfolds for me in whatever direction. And just at the end of the day, you know, Connecticut is home, and I really feel that, especially because of the pandemic, there's a level of bond that we've created together despite not being in the same room for various reasons. I really thank you and commend you all for the support and the guidance you provided our team, the leadership you've shown during a time of crisis in our country. So thank you, and that concludes the Commissioner's report.
Alan, I see you again, so you are back as Chair of the meeting. You're muted, Alan. You're muted. You're still muted, Alan.
Ah, now. Am I back? You are.
Yes.
I'm glad. Commissioner, first, since I've been silenced by my technological inability here, I just want personally to say both congratulations and very much thank you for the work you've done, for the way you've led not just the department and the Board, but the state of Connecticut, especially in this last year, but before that as well. I know that we are all thrilled by the recognition of the work that you have done and the work that the state of Connecticut educators have done with your guidance and support and the recognition that that has achieved through the recognition that you have achieved. So I join in wishing you all the best because you are bringing all the best to the students of the United States. That's exactly what we need at this moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else that we need to do today or should do?
We need a emotion.
A motion to adjourn?
No, no, no. In honor of Commissioner Dr. Cardona.
I'll so move.
So I'll move it and.
Okay, somebody needs to second it.
I'll second. Okay.
All right, and Chair Taylor, can you read it out loud or? Or Dr. Lopez?
I would give him the problems up and happening. Would you read it out loud, please? Or Stella?
I can read it. Yeah, I would read it, and I love to read it with my Latin accent. So in honor of Dr. Cardona. It says, whereas Dr. Miguel Cardona was appointed by Governor Ned Lamont to serve as Commissioner of Education for the state of Connecticut in August 2019. And whereas he led the Connecticut State Department of Education with honor and distinction, and whereas he has an accomplished career in education spanning over two decades. And whereas he has served as Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Adjunct Professor, Performance Evaluation Specialist, Principal, Art Curriculum Supervisor, Teacher, and has served on various state and local level committees, task forces, and boards. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Connecticut State Board of Education honors Dr. Miguel Cardona for his selfless dedication to Connecticut children, the Connecticut State Department of Education, and the Connecticut State Board of Education, and expresses appreciation for his service to the state of Connecticut and wishes him well in his appointment as Secretary of Education for the United States of America. Approved unanimously this thirteenth day of January 2021. United States of America, approved unanimously this thirteenth day of January 2021. And I can say in Spanish, por cuanto, Dr. Miguel Cardona. And I will not continue because I don't want to be voted out of the board.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Board. Your support and your acknowledgement means the world to me. And I'm always going to carry this group with me. And even the fun part of getting onto the meetings, I'm always, you're going to make me smile if you see, if I'm blessed enough to get there. And thank you. Thanks for that. And I love the accent. It's as American as apple pie and rice and beans.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I don't think we voted. I don't think we voted, but we can applaud and show our, you know, it's important.
Bravo. We'll thankfully pause and vote. Unanimously approved and enthusiastically approved, except that it means you're leaving us. Thank you. We have anything else to?
We have another resolution, Alan.
Ah, George.
Exactly. So you're moving on, now you're moving on to items requiring action?
Yes. Al, can you read that?
Out loud.
One moment.
I can read the resolution if you want. I mean, the-
That's what I meant. Okay.
But don't we need a motion first to approve it?
Yes.
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 I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you.
And I'll read the, should we vote first and then I'll read the resolution to make sure we vote?
You can, you can read it and then vote.
Yes.
Okay. And George, this is in order for me. I wanted to read it because I know you from way before I joined the Board. I worked with you at the Board. I worked with you on SERC. And I'm moved to tears to be able to read this to you with my Spanish accent also. So, whereas George Coleman was appointed to serve as Chairman of the State of Education Resource Center Board by Governor Daniel Malloy on December 21st, 2018. And whereas Mr. Coleman was appointed to the State Education Resource Center Board by the Connecticut State Board of Education on August 4th, 2014. And whereas Mr. Coleman retired from the Connecticut State Department of Education in October 2011 after 24-year career. And whereas Mr. Coleman himself, in multiple senior-level positions, as interim Commissioner of Education twice, Deputy Commissioner of Education, Associate Commissioner of Education, Chief Bureau of Curriculum and Instruction, Chief Bureau of Early Childhood Education, kindergarten and primary grade content consultant and curriculum unit coordinator. And whereas Mr. Coleman vast knowledge of public education, his firm beliefs in the abilities of all students, and his advocacy on their behalf, coupled with his consistently high standards and support for all those stakeholders who share responsibility for student success, will be greatly missed. Now therefore be resolved that the Connecticut State Board of Education accept his resignation of George A. Coleman from the Board of the State Education Resource Center Board. The Connecticut State Board of Education honors George Coleman and extends to him his gratitude and appreciation for his years of service to the state of Connecticut, and wishes him well in his future endeavor.
Thank you. I suggest we approve by rising and applauding George in his work. Thank you, George. I trust we will be seeing you and that you will be enjoying your full retirement, but that doesn't mean you're disappearing in any way.
If I can, you know, as an educator in Connecticut, who had aspirations to become a leader, there are a handful of people that I looked up to throughout my entire career. Some of those people know about it, some of those people don't. One of those people that I kept an eye on was George Coleman. And he's served for decades as a pillar of educational strength in Connecticut. And someone that I looked up to and is inspired to lead life. He understands people well. He is focused on a mission and helping children. And I've learned a lot from you, George, and I just wanted to say, I'm honored today to share this meeting with you because you've inspired me and you've inspired so many people in Connecticut. Thank you for your service. Enjoy retirement. And I don't think retirement is going to be a full retirement, because unless you change your phone numbers, many people are going to be calling you. Congratulations and best wishes for a healthy and happy retirement. You've served Connecticut well.
You're here.
You're here.
Thank you. May I respond? I don't know that what the procedure is.
Of course. No rebuttal, but you're certainly welcome to respond.
First of all, Commissioner, I wanted to say how privileged our state has been to have you here during this period of your commissionership. And I want you to know that those, the same qualities that we saw in you to address the challenges of our state are the challenges in state that our nation will see and that you will bring your unique talent to. And I want you to know that all of Connecticut is behind you. And that if there's anything that any of us can do, please let us know. And we are absolutely certain that the confirmation will be smooth and that you will be the next Secretary of Education in our state. So congratulations to you and to the distinction that you brought to our state by virtue of the appointment. Also, I'd like to just say that, you know, I've retired quite a few times during these. And I'm no better at it for the experience, but I just wanted to say that it is absolutely a privilege that you extended me, you, the State Board of Education, extended me to represent you on the SERC Board as your representative. I don't know that I have ever served to any two institutions with greater fidelity, with a greater sense of commitment and genuine love. And I have the State Department of Education and SERC. And to be given the opportunity to nurture SERC through its transition in a way that affirms its path, its contributions to public education, but more than that, to help its transition towards being the responsible agent that it must be as we address the challenges of the future, has been my greatest privilege. And in that, I want to say that having not discovered Ingrid, but to have elevated her in the process to the extent that her unique challenges can be brought forward and made available to the teachers and school districts across our state has been a singular privilege. I want to take the opportunity to not only acknowledge you, and it's so wonderful just seeing you, so many friends that I've known for so long, to express my confidence in what is happening in our state and what will happen for education in our state. We are indeed privileged to have people who are so thoroughly committed to seeing that every child in our state has the opportunity to realize all the dreams that they and their families have for them. The support that you have given me through any agents within the State Department of Education has been what any representative would ask for from an entity that they have been invited to serve and to represent. So thank you very much for that. I am also appreciative for all of the support both that have been given me as the Chairman of the SERC Board through the SERC staff. They have been wonderful. Their commitment to being a partner to the State Board in your agenda to help facilitate the agenda of the State Department of Education is their singular mission. I am so proud of them in terms of the new agenda that has the potential to realize itself around diversity and all that it means. And to have been a leader in that effort before the current crisis is what I think we have inherited as a great asset. And I think as a model for all of education that we have to be prospective. We have to be able to think 10 years in advance so that our students and our institutions can grow, to be prepared to meet the challenges that our students will be required to benefit from and to overcome in the very short time that we have to engage them. So with that, there are individual ones of you that I'd love to say thank you for, Desi, Charlene, all of you. You've been so, Stella, you've been so helpful to me. Good seeing Woody. I've seen Woody. Woody and I have a long history together. And Erin, thank you very much for your representation. Eric, all of you. I know everybody. So it's almost like a reunion. And you always have the risk not giving individuals the credit that they are due when you start to want to acknowledge individuals. But you've all been so supportive of me and know that there are still challenges that are out there, to the extent that I might find a new vehicle to at least make my opinion known. I won't, as a citizen, I will certainly exercise that. But to the extent that there is any support that I can give you in terms of finding solutions to those challenges, I hope you know that I'm only a phone call or email away. So thank you all and good luck to you all as you continue to support the great work on behalf of students and families in Connecticut.
Thank you, George. We voted on the recognition, yes?
Yes.
Report of the Chair.
The Chair has been thoroughly hunkered down. I'm afraid has nothing useful to report. Financial matters. Do we have anything?
No.
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 Okay.
So we'll move on to consent.
Yes.
And I want to remove the item from consent agenda, Alan.
To move the consent agenda?
To remove the report on behalf of Bonnie and Bill Davenport, who always wanted to make sure that we heard the good results and from the graduate student survey that comes out of the agriculture system. So I want to remove it from the email.
Okay, then may I have a, I guess, a motion to approve the item 8B, the report?
I second.
Moved and seconded? Who wishes to speak on this?
I think we will present it.
So is it all right if I speak to the report?
Yes, please.
Okay. Again, carrying the mantle of Terry Jones and Bill Davenport, I just want to make sure that we're all very aware and recognize the amazing accomplishments that our students that come through agri-science achieve as they go forward in life. And I think that this really points to the fact that, Erin, I'm going to keep beating the drum on looking for equity in terms of how we get students in and out of our programs, how it's funded. And I think that we just really need to acknowledge that the agri-science, when we talk about the basic needs in life, these students that are graduating out of agri-science are going into food production. They're going into all sorts of areas around how food becomes available. We've got some amazing programs from one end of the state to the other. And I can only hope that we would get more students that would want to come in. It's not just about going out and driving a tractor. It's, that's probably the smallest amount of the work that we do. I was talking with a student just the other day, and he's going to go into automotive engineering because of what he did in agri-science. So those are the sorts of things that really, really hammer home the fact that this is not just for a bunch of farm kids, that this is for students all over, urban, rural, suburban. And I thank you for the ability to speak to it.
Thank you, Bonnie. Terry would be proud.
Good.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Alan, if I could add into, it's funny, Stella, when you asked for it to be removed this morning, I had actually sent an email to Irene yesterday, the day before, and happy Bob and Bonnie on it, because this was always such a rich discussion of our Board, this report. And I always felt it was just such a great piece of data that we had as a Board. Fully know that it's by statute, and that's why the ag programs do it. But I had asked Bob, is, you know, this would be great to see all some of our technical schools, something like that. And so I share in your enthusiasm. I just think this is just fantastic to see, I mean, the rate of them finishing their college, you know, it's just amazing. And I was always amazed by it when it was presented. And it would be, and I know Bob, I'll let Bob speak to that, but he also said that it is in the works. And I also know that Irene said it's a lot of work and a lot of time looking in, going back into these students. But I think it's vital information that we should know. And it shows us the importance of these programs. And it's much more than those farm kids. I'll use Bonnie's words, those farm kids. And it's just, it just amazes me how successful they are when they leave us. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you just said, that is one of the things that is on our, one of the priorities in our plan is to make sure that we can do somewhat of that. We've struggled with it over the years about keeping track of the students. But that's got to, got to be able to do something like this. It's really helpful. It's going to be helpful for us in addition to knowing it, but also our planning picture. And I think with the legislature too, that we can show more of what happens with these students when they graduate.
Will Cox, 1993, just saying.
No, I can think about that a lot.
Can I mention, just to add on to that, right? And I think every time we have this conversation, we're also, we also sort of ask back to Ajit, okay, so what is it that P-20 win allows us to continue to also say, right? So this legislation that allows us to have this insight for the ag program came before P-20 win existed at all. And before even the technology that allowed us to match individual high school graduates with their post-secondary efforts. And so we should be closer. And I know that we are actually able to make those sorts of connections. It would be great if we, you know, continue to deepen the learnings that that dataset can provide to us, that we know what the success of all of our students are from ag programs, from the technical high schools, from our regular high schools, et cetera. How are their successes helping us to learn about how we're preparing students for their future success? So just wanted to raise that back up again, that we do have that resource at our fingertips, so to speak, to be able to allow us to do this sort of analysis.
Thank you.
And Chairman Taylor, if I may, just to add, since the report now is under discussion, it's Irene Perici. I would, I would like to just let everyone know that, yes, this is one item, and this is one report and one set of data that we're looking at right now. But as a department, as an academic team, Dr. Melissa Hickey and Harold Mackin, as well as Suzanne Louden, Kylie Freeman, all of us are looking at ways to elevate the work that we are doing to ensure that we're developing leaders, we're developing future professionals. And as a whole agency, we are hyper-focused on this work, as you said, to advance equity and provide access and opportunity. So we're really proud of this report that we can present to you. So we're really proud of this report that we can present to you, because as you've said, it tells an amazing story of the journey that these students are, are moving through and now and for the future. So we hope that we will have more that we can share with you as we continue to grow and reimagine our, our, our workforce and our career in technical education programs. So thank you for the opportunity to share this report.
Thank you very much. Anything further?
No.
Okay. Miguel has given, given his report, I believe. Do you have anything further to say, Commissioner?
Sorry, I was trying to get the mute, unmute button. No, I'm all set, thank you, we're all.
Committee reports.
So Chairman Taylor, we have some agency updates, this is Charlene.
All right.
I thought we were still on the.
We're holding on to discussion.
So Aldis, could you kind of let us know where we are now and if they have the report?
We should be moving on to discussion, so then we'll get to agency update.
Yes. And who's giving that? Charlene, honey.
I'm ready for the agency update. Are we all set with the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I mentioned earlier in the meeting that I wanted to give an opportunity.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I apologize for this. I truly apologize. I don't think we voted, we just, we talked about, we took it all, we discussed it, just a vote, a quick hand, hand vote, please.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you, my apologies, Commissioner.
No need for apologies, we're good. So moving, moving along, the agency update I shared earlier that I wanted to give are extremely talented and competent deputy commissioners and opportunity to share some updates. Desi will start with a quick update on the FAFSA challenge and just, just overview of some of the school reopening updates. And then Charlene Russell Tucker will, will take over and share a bit about some of the work that's happening in conjunction with our partners at the Department of Public Health. Ensure health and safety is the priority. So they have some updates for the board that I'll ask them to share now. Desi?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm actually going to let Charlene start with the updates and then I'll, I'll jump in with mine as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Desi, and good morning again to afternoon, no, we're not quite there yet, to the board. We have some things that we'd certainly like to share with you, starting with the Commissioner mentioned, leading with health and safety. And that's where I'm going to start. For those board members who do not know, that's since August, that we've been partnering with the Department of Public Health and we've set up Health and Safety Tuesdays, every Tuesday morning from eight to nine, that we have school superintendents, school nurses, school medical advisors, local health officials, policymakers. And yes, I know Erin, your board member here, I think has been on just about all of them. As we do updates jointly from both SDE and DPH. And I am so pleased, we actually invited in Dr. Lynn Sosa, who for those of you, that is the Deputy State Epidemiologist, because things are evolving and I just wanted her to share a few things with you. I'm sure you've read about the COVID variant and we've been getting questions about, so what is the implications for school? What's happened? And I figured she is the person, the expert, that can share that information directly with the board and answer any questions as we go forward. But we are leading with health and safety, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sosa.
Thanks, Charlene. And before I start, I just want to add my congratulations to Commissioner Cardona. This might be my only chance, so congratulations, I know we're all very happy and excited for you. So yes, so in regards to the, it's called the B117 strain, so that's the official name, name of the, of the UK strain. So last week, we did announce that we found two people with this strain. They were not related to each other. It appears that both of their exposures occurred elsewhere, other than Connecticut, but we shouldn't really take a lot of comfort in that. We expect that we will continue to find more of these strains and potentially other strains of interest as we become aware of them in the state. And we are doing a lot to increase our surveillance of, of strains to be able to detect these. The main issue with this particular strain is that it is more infectious. So the current estimate from CDC is that this strain is about one and a half times more infectious or more transmissible. So for example, if we kind of translate that into kind of people, so if I was sick and I was going to give my infection, the virus I had to two people, then with this strain, I would give it to three people, for example. And it appears that the way this particular strain works is that it's better at binding to our cells. So it's better at kind of attaching to our cells and infecting the cells of the person that it's in. Other than that, and that's bad enough, it does not appear to cause more severe infection. But it's important to understand that because this strain is more transmissible, it is going to result in more cases. And if we have more cases, we will have more hospitalizations and unfortunately likely more deaths. So that's why this strain is of, of great importance right now. The current estimate in the United States is that this strain accounts for about 0.5% of all of the strains that are out there. But unfortunately, again, be given that we know it's more transmissible, it is expected at, I think the current estimate is that it will be about 50% of the strains in the, by the spring or so. So what does that mean for us and everything that we're trying to do? So the other good news here is that the vaccines do appear to work against this strain, which is really, really important. It is also important to recognize that the mitigation measures that we have, that have been put in place in schools and that I, I, you know, happy to report that it appears that most schools have done a really good job, that those mitigation measures really do work. And this is the time to really be reinforcing those mitigation measures and not really letting our guard down, because that, those mitigation measures do work. And we need to make sure that people are kind of continuing, continually re-engaging on those. And I understand that that's hard. I, I, I don't know if any, if you all know, but I have a family full of teachers, my husband is a teacher, both here in Connecticut, also a family back home in Illinois, where everybody is teachers. So I hear about this all the time, as well as my own children. So I, we, we certainly recognize the, the issues with COVID fatigue. But this is the time to really be reinforcing the distancing, the mask-wearing, the cleaning and disinfection, so that we can continue to, to engage against, against the strain and all the other COVID strains, or SARS-CoV-2 strains that are out there. So that was my brief summary. If Charlie, if there's anything else you would like me to add, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Sosa. I also, I know that the vaccine is not her area, but for the board to know as well that the vaccine expert from DPH has been on our Tuesday morning calls. And at this point, Dr. Sosa, I know that we, we're in Phase 1A of, of the vaccination implementation, I think moving to 1B. And I know that the Vaccine Allocation Subcommittee includes education in the, in Phase 1B, with a lot more details to come. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to share on that from, I know, as I said, I know you're not necessarily.
I think I'm going to stay out of that. So I think, like you said, I think they have finalized who was in Phase 1B. I think the logistics of that are still that we need to be hearing about.
That sounds good, thank you. So I don't know if anyone has questions directly for Dr. Sosa, then we'll move on with their, with our updates.
Charlene, I actually have a question. It might be for you and you can imagine it's on vaccines. First of all, I want to thank you. I remember approaching you in September and, and saying, you know, I need some more information here, I'm getting calls left and right about, you know, who's opening, who's not there, who's in, who's out. So the rest of my board members, and I know some of you have been on, these calls are just so very informative. And, you know, we pushed, I know Charlene was a big push of trying to get districts to take that information and get it out to their staff, which we increased and it has calmed down, you know, the, the, the problems that we saw out there in our district. So they are so benefit, beneficial. The biggest one with vaccines, of course, is that, you know, educators were put on and they're, they're sitting now like in the waiting room. The biggest question I get, and I don't know if anyone is answering it, is that we have a lot of educators and obviously they're not all going to be vaccinated in one week. A lot are asking is the educators who are in school, are they first? And then do the remote educators come after? Good question, but I don't know how a district would be able to put all their educators in two different piles. So I don't know if either one could address that, but that certainly is the biggest question out there at this point.
Anybody?
I, I will just share with you that we'll continue to have that conversation on our Tuesday morning meeting with, with, with the staff from DPH involved with that. Not to get into the details, but I know there's a whole system and process for uploading, uploading the rosters from all the employers that would certainly include our, our schools and, and districts. And I think they all go up as their phase is ready, then those folks get uploaded. I don't know if there's a way to differentiate, you may know that better, but that's my understanding from that, that, that system that's being used.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I am, I really don't know the ins and outs of VAMs, but I think these are the details. There's many, many, many groups in Phase 1B. And so how this all gets rolled out to all those groups are, you know, the, I get it, the devil's in the details and these are the types of things that will need to be considered.
Thank you.
And so thank you, Dr. Sosa, as I said before, and I publicly appreciate the, our colleagues at, at DPH. We're in constant contact, multiple meetings in the course of a week, just so we can constantly get information. Our Tuesday morning, we have over 900 participants registered on our Tuesday morning calls and we're averaging over 600 participants. So more and more folks are coming, they're getting their questions answered. If we can't get to them, we're following up with them. And so it's been a really great lifeline, I think, for all our stakeholders to be able to have this kind of weekly access. We've heard very positively from superintendents to be able to come on a call or send questions ahead and come on and be able to, to get these answers directly. So I wanted you to be aware of that, but I also wanted to thank Dr. Sosa and DPH for the work that they're doing there. Additionally, just to let you know that there's also the ability for teachers to have priority testing. And so the state has contracted with testing partners to promote priority testing for staff and we, we continue to share that information and ability for teachers to go to certain locations and they literally have, I guess, almost like a golden ticket or pass to get to the front of the line so that they can be tested. And so that really is important. We're also continuing to promote the rapid binax now testing that's available. And we talked about this past Tuesday, where districts can partner with a, a health provider to make sure that asymptomatic students and staff can be immediately tested as well. So those are the things that we're continuing to do. And we're also at the point of rolling out a process to support our districts with the contact tracing that they're having to do with a partnership with the Connecticut Association of Schools to be able to get added capacity as districts may need some support in doing that. So I just wanted the board to kind of really get a sense of where we are with leading with health and safety with our districts. Any more questions on that before I turn it over to Desi for some additional updates?
Don't see any, Charlene.
All right.
Before it gets turned over, I would want to add, you know, the, the, if you recall, early on, we set out to blur the lines between agencies. You remember that? We said we're going to try to work together to make sure that we keep the consumer of the product that we serve, which is public education at the forefront of our conversation. And to do that well, we have to work well with Department of Children and Families. We have to work well with economic development. We have to work well with public health. This, to me, is a shining example of what's possible when we blur those lines, we come together and we support one another in, in an effort to provide clear and consistent communication. As Belline mentioned, those calls are great. Lynn, I want to thank you publicly and your team publicly for partnering with us to make sure that the information that we're giving out is health and safety first. And you know, that's one of the things that I really picked up during this pandemic, that the, the degree to which we're going to have trust and openness and, and ability to get students safely into classrooms is going to be dependent on how well we can make sure that we're treating the education emergency in the right context during a public health pandemic. And, you know, Lynn and your team, you've done that with Deidre's leadership and all the other colleagues there. So I want to thank you for that and your share that this is possible. And we're also doing this type of work with other agencies. And I know this leadership team, this board really supports that work. So you're allowing us to do those things and, and connect. Charlene, you've really taken it to the, to the next level and I commend you for that. Thank you. Desi?
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of updates. One, Stella, I, I actually remember the conversation we had downstairs in the lobby about FAFSA and that was a while ago. So, so very excited to see all of this come to fruition. I do want to just shout out both Chris Soto and Ajit Gopalakrishna and, and their staff for the respective work that went into this behind the scenes. So the FAFSA Challenge is a statewide challenge open to high schools across the state to increase the amount of students over last year. And, and so we're all just very excited about this opportunity and this challenge. And I know you all received the, the release that, that went out from, from Pete Yasbek as well. So again, Stella, thank you for, for championing that and, and thank you to our staff for really building that infrastructure to get that off the ground. As it relates to districts, a couple of updates here. I noted that New Haven has been one that, that, you know, the board has been very interested in over the past couple of weeks and months. I've had weekly conversations with the superintendent in New Haven and the plan is to bring kids in on January 19th at the elementary level in a hybrid model. And they will look to increase that and expand that to, to middle school in, in the weeks to come after that. So New Haven is planning to move forward on bringing students in on January 19th, as is Danbury. That is another district that I noted that the board has, has an interest in. And so Danbury also looking at a combination of the hybrid model to be able to bring kids, some kids back in beginning on January 19th. Also, as it relates to just other districts, we are going to be meeting Charlene, myself, Chris Plouette, the Commissioner's Special Advisor, and I are going to be meeting with superintendents in various districts in which kids haven't had the opportunity to, to, to come into school. Those meetings are, are actually being scheduled, literally as we speak, Anne Marie is, is putting together the schedule for us to have conversations and, and really find out on what additional supports are, are needed to give kids an opportunity in, in various districts. And the final thing I want to just update the board on is, and again, another shout out to our friends in the performance office for building the infrastructure to create a weekly data collection so that we know what schools across the state, what districts were in what models last week. So I just would remind everybody, now that we're back from Christmas break, last week was the first full week back. So if you check Ed's site out, you will see the most updated information as it relates to last week's models across the state. And I would just encourage, you know, all of you to just, you know, bookmark that link and check that link as that gets updated every week so that everyone is aware of what models districts were in the, the prior week. So we collect this information as it pertains to the, to the previous week. So just want to make sure the board is, is aware of that and that is a public and very forward-facing. And again, just want to thank the folks who built that system and what was record time, what normally would take nine months to build behind the scenes, what got done in a matter of, of, of weeks. And so just want to acknowledge the work of our staff internally for all of the different things that are happening in the middle of this pandemic. Thank you for the opportunity to, to give these updates. Commissioner?
Thank you, all Charlene and Desi for, for those updates. And Lynn, you know, I, I, I don't think I have to say it, but we have a tremendous team. And one thing that I noticed in both of their updates is that they're quick to deflect and quick to give credit to others as well. You really cultivated a team of selfless leaders that just work well together with, with each other. And I know you're going to continue to support that work. And I know you're going to continue to support that work. Charlene, Desi, thank you. There's a lot of work to be done, as I said earlier, and I'm really confident in the direction that we're taking as an agency under this board leadership. So that's it for the agency updates. I'm going to pause there and turn back over to Chairman Taylor.
Commissioner, may I just, I'm sorry, just there was two quick things. I'm sorry, that I wanted to make sure the board was aware of. At the last board meeting, if you recall, the board heard from parents, a couple of parents from Greenwich who had some concerns about special education process. And we did do some follow-up, and I know Brian is on the line with folks of questions, but I know that he followed up with the parents, met with them, and has also reached out to the district and is continuing to do that work. So I know that that is occurring. And while we didn't have a financial update today, you may have heard, and so I want you to know because maybe by the end of the week we'll be sending information out on the SR2 funding that came to the state. And I know Kathy's also on the line that can just quickly tell you like how much money we've got and what our plans are for getting that out. So that's important, as you will hear about that in the coming weeks. If that's okay, Chairman Taylor, can I just have her do that quickly?
Please.
Okay.
Actually, it's almost good afternoon. Good morning, board members, and Happy New Year. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. So as Charlene said, we received some really good news post-Christmas. I guess we could probably call it our holiday present. Connecticut is going to receive $492 million in what's called the SR2, or the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds Round 2. And we are in the midst of doing the calculations necessary to get that, the district allocations out to each district. The department will be able to reserve 10% of those funds for statewide activities. So we will have $49 million available to us for state-level activities with the balance going to districts. Another interesting thing that they did when they passed it is, I don't know if some of you remember, but there was an enormous amount of confusion under SR1 about how much funding had to be reserved for non-public schools through the equitable services provision. This equitable services is not a required set aside for the public schools under this. So all of the funds that they will receive will go directly to the school district. There is a separate pool of funds that are being made available under the Governor's Education Emergency Relief Fund that will be specific to the non-public schools. I'm still waiting to get some more information on that because I believe the department will be responsible for administering it. Connecticut's total allocation of SR funding between Round 1 and 2 is $603 million, of which 60 million has been reserved for state-level activities and 543 million will go to the school districts for activities at the school district level. And we are working, currently working internally on priorities for those funds for the state level and suggested priorities for our school districts. But we'll have more information by the next board meeting, but I wanted to give you a sense of just how much funding will be coming into Connecticut to help with the next phase of school districts returning to school and doing education recovery. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Kathy, I have a question. What is the process for approving or reviewing the statewide activities? How are you going to do that? Is the board going to have a role? Is it running through OPM? I just, what happens when you get $60 million to allocate for state activities?
That is an excellent question. We are coordinating right now with the Office of Policy and Management and the Governor to ensure that we are in alignment with what their statewide priorities would be. We then will work internally, and it is certainly something that we can bring to the board and have some specific discussion around. I think at this point, and Charlene and Desi can correct me if I'm wrong, our focus is probably going to be around education recovery and versus, you know, in the PPE and some of the things that were needed just to get the schools up and ready to actually bring kids in or purchase of the devices. But so some of that's still to be determined.
Charlene, did you have something?
Sure, I was just going to add to that, that we will continue, if we recall, we had priorities for the SR1 funding that includes social, emotional, learning, mental health, behavioral health supports. That will certainly be a part of that. Augmenting our work with family and community engagement is also a part of that work. And as Kathy mentioned, they, you know, continue to look at augmenting devices and connectivity and also the technical assistance needed for both our staff and families to be able to access all of that together. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. We also recognize implementation at the local level is something that we're going to need to focus on. Kathy is monitoring, you know, is monitoring the level of utilization of funds right now from SR1. And we're now adding, you know, in some cases, three to four times that amount that they received in SR1. And you will see what we send out, but some of our districts are getting 30, 40 million dollars out of this new round of funding. So addressing things with implementation is going to be important. Desi, myself, and Kathy and some other leaders met with their opportunity districts just this past week. They came into a meeting with us with their CFOs, their financial folks, so we can start talking about how do we make sure we're implementing and utilizing those funds and so we don't get to the end of the line and those funds just die because they were not utilized. So that will also be a point of focus for us about implementation and deployment at the local level within the priorities that we've talked about here.
Thank you. Do we have any sense of, presumably this is emergency funding, it's one time for now this year? So are we going to get things started that can be stopped if we don't have funding to continue?
So Chairman Taylor, you're correct in the sense that these are one-time funds. They actually are able to expend them all the way through September of 2023 for the SR2 funds, 2022 for the SR1 funds. So again, to Charlene's point, this makes it all the more critical that the superintendents and their fiscal people are, and their boards are plant, you know, laying out plans for how to best use these monies in a way that won't create structural deficits by creating new, essentially new program. Most of these funds will be used for, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it, remediation type efforts that would be one-time costs. And to the extent that there are, you know, good things that we learned from this that districts may need funding for in the future or wish to continue, that's a conversation that we can then have with them over the next 18 months in order to see if there's resources that would be needed beyond this period.
Thank you. That's useful. I'm glad to hear that the federal government gave that kind of leeway and time for expenditure. I was kind of expecting something less.
Thank you. Chairman Taylor, if I may, you know, a couple of things, you know, we learned when the pandemic first hit and the first set of funds were made available, it was really important for us to get it out the door, get it into districts. We were in emergency mode. Not to say that we're not definitely sharing that same sense of urgency now to provide systems to accelerate remediation and provide more opportunities for students to have access to quality curriculum, quality tools. You know, that's critically important. But I, what I'm hearing here and what I agree with is that there, given the fact that there is, there are so much funds coming in, that we establish a method of communication with our State Board of Education so that you can see and be aware of how this is happening. Early on, it was a very quick, we want to get the money out and we were dealing with so much new operating procedure with the pandemic. I think now we should be establishing communications, sharing those priorities again, sharing where the funding is going, and if necessary, having those subcommittee meetings to make sure that you're fully informed and aware and have the opportunity to ask all the questions. Secondly, I think, you know, what we learned from the beginning is districts know what they need to help children succeed. And I think what we need to do is make sure that we're providing those pathways for the money to hit the ground and allow those supports to happen to students as early as possible. So working with our colleagues at the Governor's Office and OPM, we're going to try to make sure that, you know, if the need is to provide academic support, that we're going to give that access to academic support. If the need is PPE or devices, we're going to give access to that right away. And working closely with our district-level partners to make sure that the priorities that they're identifying could be what their students need, we're supporting them. And, you know, this board and our leadership team have really wanted to make sure that we're a service-oriented agency, and I think we've done that over the last pandemic, and this is another opportunity for us to continue to do that, make sure that the funds that were dedicated to our students make it to the districts as easily as possible so that the students can benefit from it. So thanks for the opportunity to share.
Thank you. What you are doing. Any other questions on that? Suddenly got very windy. There we go. That takes us to committee reports. We have any on the list of your academic standards?
No report.
Okay. Accountability.
Stella, we can't hear you.
And we've got an update of three schools. I think you can hear me now.
Yes.
That we made on December 15th. And we had an update of three schools, Wesleyan Grand Community School in New Haven, Windham High School in Willeman Peak, and New Beginnings Academy in Bridgeport. We're planning our next meeting for January 19th, I believe, and we will continue with updates. And also we look forward to meeting with Yasha Abuke to listen to the concerns and suggestions she have regarding how the children with disabilities have been impacted by this pandemic. Thank you.
The Finance Audit and Budget Committee has not met. Budgetization and policy. Karen?
Yes, we met this morning. We had a wonderful update on Goal 1 of our five-year plan. Again, kudos to the staff. It was really, a really good update of all the work that's going on and continues to go on with our family and our children. And we also passed a racial justice and equity position statement that will be coming to the full board for February. And so we've been working on that really since the summer. And thanks to Karen and Malia, who did work with the staff, we do now have a statement that we'll bring to the full board in February.
Excellent. Thank you. C-Tex, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, we have, we had a number of new board members that have been appointed to the C-Tex Board, and I wanted to give you, we spent the last board meeting both on the business at hand as well as getting them all acquainted with each other and getting started with the new folks. They are tremendous. There were three that were appointed by this occasion, Christine Benz, who is the Director of Training and for Trump Manufacturing in Farmington, Eric Brown, who's the Vice President for Manufacturing Policy and Outreach with CBIA, and Dr. Harris, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Capital Community College at Hartford. We also had a change in the designee from the Department of Economic Development. The new person is Kelly Marie Valries, who is the Executive Director of the Workforce Development Unit at the department. We also had Jeff Auker, who is the Head of Innovation at the Info System in Hartford, Karen Birch, Dr. Karen Birch, who is the Executive Director of the Center for the Next Generation Manufacturing, and George Anderson, who is the Chief Learning Officer at Synchrody in Stanford, looking forward to their service on the board. I know they're all going to make a great contribution. They've all agreed to be on committees, and we are getting started with this new group. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, who'll give you a brief update on some of the other things that have been happening.
Thank you. Jeff?
Sure.
Jeff, it's all yours.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So per our Goal 3 of our strategic operationships with K through 12 school districts and colleges to create clearly articulated career and technical education pathways and opportunities for a broader set of students and adult learners. So in that vein, we were very excited that yesterday we had a ribbon cutting at the great Wilcox Tech, you know, that had C-Tex's favorite son graduate from there. But yesterday we had a ribbon cutting in collaboration with the Meriden Public Schools. HG Wilcox Tech opened an after-school career and technical education program for grade 10 and 11 Meriden Public School students. So we had several students that were 10th and 11th graders join into our Career Academy program, and it will graduate students from Maloney High School and Platte High School in Meriden with two and a half CTE credits that we'll be awarding in partnership. So the kids will be coming over in the afternoon, taking manufacturing, culinary, and carpentry classes. And, you know, like I said, this counts towards their high school diploma, but it also gives them credentials in career tech ed fields. And we're really, really proud of this partnership, and we're looking to grow this partnership also and expand these programs into Middletown, and we're also going to do it as well down in Groton at Grasso Tech as well. So this one in Meriden was our first one, and we're very proud of it. Just very briefly, this past month, we established a committee called Looking to the Future to brainstorm what we've learned from the hybrid learning model, distance learning, and the committee's gathering information on the use of technology, family engagement, student engagement, communications, professional learning, social, emotional learning as major discussion points. Because, you know, there's a lot to learn from the mistakes that we've made in the last nine or 10 months and the successes that we've had that we want to replicate moving forward. So we're hoping that this will well inform us for the 2021, 2022 school year. And, you know, we're well on our way with enrollment. Hopefully next month we'll have some solid enrollment numbers for next year. And that kind of concludes the report from C-Tex for the month.
Thank you very much. Anything more?
Alan, could I just comment to Jeff? I was never so thrilled to see that ribbon cutting take place yesterday. I know that's something that Meriden wanted to join in with Wilcox or Stoner. I mean, we're talking about two schools that literally you could throw a football and have a catch between the two. So it's great, and it's so good to see, and 22 students. I mean, I thought that was amazing, and I'm so happy to hear that you're going to expand it to some of the other tech schools. I just think that's just amazing opportunity and a way to use our state schools even more so. So thank you for that. I was really happy to see that.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Jeff.
Chairman Taylor, if I could...
Chairman Taylor, if I can comment on that. Jeff, your ability to work with local districts and promote these innovative programs is exceptional. Thank you for doing that. I'm glad to hear that it launched and that the questions are, were they Meriden scissors or were they Wilcox's scissors? But we'll leave that for another day. You know, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for that partnership. And I remember you talking about it two, three years ago, and you got it done. Good job.
Commissioner, are you suggesting the Audit Committee ought to look into that question?
I just wondered if they were made in the machine shop over at Wilcox. That's all.
Thank you. Woody, NASB?
NASB, yes. NASB has asked me to write an article for one of their publications about all the initiatives that are underway here in Connecticut to increase the diversity of our educators. So I'm doing that and including a few other states too. And I don't know how this happened, but I'm on three committees now with NASB. I'm going to be very busy.
Well, you'll learn a lot and teach a lot.
I am learning a lot, yes.
To hearing what you bring back about what other states are doing, if anything, that we should copy. I'm sure they're copying us.
Well, yeah, from what I've found so far, there are some of the states, they're talking about what they want to do as opposed to us where we actually have done these things, so.
I'm glad to hear that. Okay, with done, Cirque, is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up?
Yep, question of privilege, Chairman Taylor. I think we're all in denial that this may be Commissioner Cardona's last meeting. And although we did a resolution honoring him, I just wanted to apologize because in addition to being the Vice Chair, I'm also the unofficial Social Coordinator of Events. And because of the pandemic, we cannot get together appropriately to toast him and wish him the best. He knows that we are with him, we're supporting of him. So I'm going to do something, and I know this is for the public. And because I'm all, I don't care about being embarrassed, but I cannot sing. But I'm going to sing a few lines for you from my heart. This is an old Spanish song, and it simply says this way. And then I'm going to leave because I have to share another meeting at 12:30. So I'm going to leave so nobody, you know, so I'm not embarrassed further. But it goes like this. Adios con el corazón que con el alma no puedo. Al despedirme de ti, al despedirme me muero.
Oh.
Very good.
That was very nice, Estella.
The next words of that song are, tú serás el bien de mi vida. You guys have really rich minds. Thank you.
Exact, that's it. You know it.
Listen.
Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you. With that, is there anything else I can add? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved, Karen.
Any objection? Your adjourned. Thank you, Commissioner.
Take care, everybody.
Take care, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Bless.
Thank you.
God bless to all.
Yes, thank you.